I will call this meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order at 7:00 PM on Monday, October 2nd, and I already said at 7:00, so I need to say it again, here in Millville. So let's actually, are there other committees that need to be called to order? Why don't we do that first? So FINCOM, so not yet, CLADA, okay?
RINCO.
Capital.
Capital does have five members here, which is great to see. Peter Crusoe Chair, Jennifer Gill Vice Chair, we have Steve Tringali, who's our Recorder and Secretary, we have Jason Mailey, who's here, and representing the Planning Board, we have Hel Gilicki here, representing the Finance Committee. So appreciate all of your presence.
Okay. And then what about Planning Board? Do you have a quorum?
No, we're just...
We don't need a, I don't believe we need a quorum because we've already voted. We're just told to be here to represent.
Okay.
And to speak to the articles.
So now you need an option?
Yep.
Okay. And then I'm going to say School Committee and School Building Committee do not have quorums. Okay. Let's make sure we're playing by the rules. Okay, and now we can stand for the Pledge of Legions.
(Inaudible)
A pledge of legions to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, round of introductions. We'll start with Roland Barrett.
Richard Remmels.
Andrew Allward.
Jennifer Gill.
Peter Crusoe Town Administrator.
Matthew Mailey.
Okay. So new business. So we will start with, actually, I'm going to switch A and B since I just saw Jason come in. Okay. Because I think it's going to be faster.
Yes.
So Jason Solonis reached out to ask to volunteer to be a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals through 6/30/2025. He came to the meeting last week and said, you know, he just wanted to be involved with the community, keep a nice little talk. He sent a letter as well. That was part of our packets last week. Peter reached out to Tom Mulvey.
Yes.
And he was enthusiastic to have the support and the help. So I feel comfortable that we can just appoint him to the Zoning Board of Appeals unless anyone has any other questions. He's here if anyone wants to ask him something really quick, or...
We spoke to him last week.
Yes.
So...
Okay. So I will make a motion to appoint Jason Solonis as a member to the Zoning Board of Appeals through June 30th, 2025.
Second.
Thank you, Roland.
Beat me to it.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Roland?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Jennifer's aye. Matthew?
Aye.
All right. Thank you for volunteering, Jason.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and Selectmen as Associate through 6/30/24. I don't remember who volunteered for that. It was Roland?
Yeah.
Okay. He sounds so enthusiastic.
Oh, I'm very, very happy.
Okay.
He likes punishment.
I enjoy all that stuff, so.
Okay.
Let's do it.
All right. So looking for a motion?
I'll make a motion. Oh.
You have to give the whole thing, Matthew.
Fair. I make a motion to nominate Roland Barrett as Associate Member of the Zoning Board of Appeals through June 30th, 2024.
Second.
Thank you, Andrew. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Roland?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Aye. Matthew?
Aye.
All right. Congratulations, Roland.
Thank you.
Okay.
I had nothing else to do.
Collecting boards like Legos.
Yep. I'm on three notes.
Good. All right. So I knew that would be quick, so we flopped A and B. So we'll go back to consideration of special time meeting warrants. So we have the feasibility study. If anyone from the school, or School Committee, or School Building Committee would like to come up and sit at the table. We have the warrant with us.
And so you're, this is a rough draft of the warrant. It's a lot, you know, we're waiting for some articles from council that need special council wording.
Well, again, for...
So I didn't, you know, there's some eyes to dot and so forth. And so your next meeting, you will actually be voting on the warrant and presumably signing it, and you might vote on your support or not of the articles at the same time.
Yep.
Okay.
Tonight, you're informational.
So is anything you'd like to share?
Like Jason?
Okay.
Speak.
Sure.
Thanks. Good evening, everybody. Nice to see you all. Thanks for having us. We're at a really exciting juncture in this process. Those that have been following the work, what used to be our Capital Planning Committee started, gosh, I think at this point in 2019, and began very early on with what both of our towns had asked for, which was really a sense of where we are with our capital as a school district, and really wanted to get a deep dive into all of our facilities, what the challenges are, issues are, but in real, concrete terms, not just kind of anecdotal. So we partnered with a third party to come in and really do just that, do a capital planning study for us. And what came out of that, and I know that this is no surprise in this group, because you've heard a lot about this over the past few years, but was that our high school needs a significant amount of work. And by significant, I mean tens of millions of dollars to bring it up to code with our ADA compliance issues, and also all of the general building systems, structures, envelope of the building itself is crumbling in a lot of ways. And so through that process, the Capital Planning Committee decided to put forward a statement of interest to the Mass School Building Authority for a new high school. The MSBA requires that the submitting team pick one building, you know, to actually put forward, but in a district that's actually our size, which is pretty small, you really can't look at one building without look at all, looking at all the buildings. So while we submitted for the high school, part of the process will be to actually do a real thorough analysis at all of our facilities, and looking at enrollment, and seeing what essentially does the district as a, you know, kind of an, over the long haul, need. And so we submitted a statement of interest. We were one of, I think, 58 applications that went in, and 26 were selected for what's called a senior study, where MSBA sends out a senior team on their end to come into the building that has been submitted, and again, our case, the high school, and do a real deep analysis of that. And actually, Jennifer, I think you were at that meeting, it was last September, the senior study team came out, met with a small team of folks from both Blackstone, Millville, and the School District Administration and School Committee. And then in December, they boiled down that 26 kind of list of schools to 10, based on need and based on the amount of work that actually is required and much needed in each one of these buildings. We were on that shortlist. And so that clearly spoke to us that the Mass School Building Authority sees the need for this as well, or we wouldn't have been selected on that shortlist of schools. So this process, like anything that the state does, is slow and is very long, and in some aspects, it's okay, because it's also a really huge, potentially a huge project. So where we are now is in what is called the eligibility period. Part of that eligibility period is to work with our two towns to see if they would support the passing of what's called a feasibility study. And I know that isn't new to anybody around this table in terms of what it is, but for our friends listening at home that might not be sure. It's essentially having a team of architects and engineers come in and study the high school, but also, again, in our case, because we're a smaller system and our schools really do depend on each other, they're actually going to take a look at all four, and get, and by four, I mean the complex as a whole, JFK, AFM, being one of the four, and really take a deep dive into all four of our facilities to try to get a better sense, based on our enrollment projections, what we actually need long-term as a school system. You know, they're, they have a vested interest because, as you know, we've done a lot of work with MSBA on our accelerated repair projects, with the boilers at MES, we've done roofs, we've done windows, doors. Right now, the accelerated repair pipeline is actually on hiatus. I think it has probably a lot to do with inflation and supply chain issues, and still catching up from pandemic-era kinds of challenges. So the only projects they ran for our cohort when we submitted are for either new builds or renovation addition. Our application actually was not looking for a new build. It was actually a renovation addition, because in our initial submission, we had talked about the desire to keep the auditorium, the cafeteria, and the gymnasium. Those are huge spaces. And actually renovate and then put what the MSBA would refer to as an addition off of that. So it isn't technically a brand-new build with that. So I just wanted to clarify that piece. And so where we are is coming before each of the towns to seek their support for a feasibility study. For a project our size, it's about $1 million for a feasibility study, but you, I'm sure, remember at our annual town meeting, both towns passed the capital stabilization fund. And the school committee in June, after it was approved by both towns, I think it was the June 22nd school committee meeting, moved $500,000 into, from our E and D, into the capital stabilization fund. So that would leave the cost of a $1 million feasibility study to both towns at a $500,000 total to be split by the percentages accordingly. So I believe Millville's appropriation is around $126,000. Do I have that right, Jennifer?
It's $126,950.
Okay. So if the town supports that, that would be the amount from Millville that we would look for in order to do that. The feasibility study itself will take anywhere between 12 to 18 months to conclude. And that start to finish, you know, if this gets approved, we then need to go back in front of the MSBA, have them approve putting us into the feasibility study phase. Again, right now, we're in the eligibility study phase. And then the feasibility study phase would actually allow us to move forward and secure the architects and engineers that we need to come in and study this project. At the end of those, say, 18 months, what would then happen is the experts in the field would kind of come forward and say, hey, BMR, you submitted this, but really, this is what you all need moving forward. Like, this is what makes the most sense for your two communities and your school district community. And we would bring that forward to the towns, again, to take a second vote on, you know, approving that project or not. And so it's just kind of a little bit, in a nutshell, about that. And then if that, if that project is approved, it's about a three-year build out from there. So we're still five years out from, you know, four and a half, five years out from anything, frankly, should the feasibility study be approved.
Okay. So, and I sent Dr. Shafalka a couple of questions, and he answered those for me. So my, asked if we have a projection on the square foot of the new building. He said, no. And that's fair, right? We have to do the feasibility study. And I asked about the scope, because the, what was sent us, it seemed more narrow, but you've already clarified that. So that was kind of my biggest thing, is that I know that we have buildings that aren't at full capacity. We have too many buildings. So if this is going to come back with, you need these two buildings or three buildings, and this is the right way to move forward, I think that's a great outcome, because I'm hoping, I'm not promising, and I'm sure no one would promise this, but hoping that maybe the operational budget from the school will get a little bit more right-sized, based on where the schools, we're using fewer buildings, they're full, or, you know, maybe not full, but at the right capacity level and all the other good stuff. So that was something I really wanted to see, and I'm happy that you shared that again tonight. And then I guess, lastly, we do have over $1 million in our stabilization account, so we actually do have enough money to put forth without doing anything to taxpayers, a debt exclusion, or, you know, whatever the other path would be forward. So we're in good shape, I think, for the town of Millville. So I don't know if anyone has any other questions or concerns?
Jennifer, on, if it's okay to add this piece...
Yeah, of course.
...to your square footage questions, that's a really good one. And it depends on ultimately what the grade configuration is that MSBA would recommend for us to move forward with. They build not, they've been very clear about this, not a foot more than 175 square feet per student. So it all depends upon the grade configuration. If it's a 7 through 12, an 8 through 12, a 6 through 12, right, it all is going to be kind of contingent upon that. Right now, our high school is about 159,000 square feet. But again, those three large spaces, we really want to keep. We would never get spaces that size through MSBA, so we'd love to just renovate them.
Okay. Actually, I did have a question. So you mentioned we're in the eligibility phase, and is there any reason why they wouldn't move us to the feasibility phase?
If the towns don't pass the feasibility study.
Okay, that's...
Yeah, that'd be the only reason.
So basically, if we both say yes, then we're in?
Yep.
Okay.
They take a vote at the December meeting, and we can be off and running.
Okay. Does anyone have any other questions?
Just on the financing, because I know Jen talked about, you know, our stabilization accounts, but this is actually a borrowing. So we would, you would have some sort of short-term borrowing...
That's right.
...in anticipation of the bigger project or some larger project. But we would see the cost of this as a debt item in our debt service.
On your capital side, yeah.
On the capital side, in the FY '25 budget...
That's right.
...is when we would first see the payment. So that's how we pay. You're not going to send us the bill for the full, right?
It'd be a ban, a short-term ban that we would do before we'd ultimately bond the final project at the end.
Gotcha. Okay. That, that makes good sense.
We wouldn't take anything out of stabilization?
No, this would come through the budget process as a capital, like we, like they currently do for, you know, the boiler project, as an example. And this would be, our portion of it would be the general debt piece that's assessed to the two towns, presumably. I did share with the board's packet, as well as with the capital committee, and also forwarded to the finance committee, you know, the summary from some time ago that gives a good history on how you got to where we're at...
Right.
...basically today. So I encourage the folks on the voting boards to read that, because it does give a lot of good information. It talks about the various school options that might come out of this feasibility study. But you don't know that yet, so...
What was submitted, and it may not be where we land, but was to move the school district to a two-building district. But I don't want to alarm anybody. That, that may not be where we ultimately...
Correct. Understood.
It was just, we had to submit a model, and that was what this Capital Planning Committee put forward. And also important to note, the Capital Planning Committee disbanded in June, and is now officially, we have a new school building committee.
Which you're required for MSBA, correct?
That's right.
Yes. So for the capital committee, if any of our capital committee members have questions, I, you know, please raise your hands. I would welcome it, because I think tonight, we might take a vote as a committee, a capital committee. I'm the chair. I got stuck with that job. I don't know if I really...
He volunteered. He was enthusiastic at the time.
As you all were told.
(Inaudible)
So if you do have questions, I encourage you to ask them.
I just have one question. So are there any foreseeable costs outside of the $126,950 that we would be allocating at this time, or is it just too soon to determine that?
So the feasibility study piece is pretty straightforward, and working with our senior project coordinator from MSBA, and we looked at projects going all the way back to, frankly, to 2014, but we stayed really with the most current to see high schools our size, our square footage, our population. And the amount for the feasibility study landed right around the $1 million mark. So I think at this point, I think we're safe in that ballpark. But, you know, once you get into a project, as, like at home, and you open a wall, and you're like, oh, I didn't know that was there. Right? So that's further down the line.
The high school is currently the oldest building in the district, right?
Well, it was opened in 1969.
Yep. Okay. So it's oldest by, like, how old are the other buildings?
Complex would be the next one.
Yeah. And the, and the AFM side, I believe the addition was put on in 84, I think. Was it the early 80s?
The early 80s.
Does that sound right?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'm just wondering, why would, wouldn't it make sense to maybe fix up or repair the newer buildings? Wouldn't that be cheaper than keeping the oldest building and repairing that?
So that's a good, really, really good question. When we were going through, and those that are on, I know Steve, yeah, Jay, those that were on the Capital Planning Committee, we studied literally every possible scenario of, like, where to move kids, what type of grade configuration, where, like, what piece of land could support a new build, what would be the appropriate, you know, size of land we would need. We looked at everything from, you know, exits and entrances, and we talked through, I mean, for months, every possible scenario. And it really landed back on the high school, like, spot is the best place for the needs of a high school, based on the fields and where everything already is. But we, I mean, we looked at every possible scenario, but it's how we landed on what we put forward in the statement of interest. But I mean, if anybody else wants to address that.
Yeah. So Andrew, everything is based off of size configuration. So if you don't use the high school, let's say, and we can't keep the auditorium, a new auditorium that we, we might get as part of the project might only seat 200 people or 300 people. You know, so everything is based on your current enrollment size versus the enrollment size when they built the building originally, when it was the dual junior-senior high school. So that's why the cafeteria, the gym space, is all bigger than anything you would get if you didn't build there, and no other school has comparable space.
Would the space be needed, though, considering the fact that it seems that there's going to be a downward trend that's going to continue in student enrollment?
Yeah. So I think a few things. So there's inside, actual physical space for the teaching and learning, and then there's the outside space for the fields and all of the, you know, the track and all of that. And so, you know, the position from the Capital Planning Committee was very much, and still now, School Building Committee is, that that, that space would be needed. We also, you know, we don't know what the feasibility study is going to show. So will it just be a 9 through 12? Might be a 7 through 12? Are we, you know, like, so at this point, we're not entirely sure what that's going to bear out. But the position was very much that it would be needed. We submitted a 6 through 12 model, and then reconfiguring the middle school. So, you know, as far as what this statement of interest includes, based on what the Capital Planning Committee put forward, yes, the space would be needed.
Okay. What is the current capacity of each of the buildings in use?
So I should know this by heart. Let me think this through. MES was built for around, I've, I've done this many times, I should be able to remember this. MES was built for around 400 students. The complex collectively, AFM and JFK, was built for about 700, and I want to say 95 students. The middle school was built for 850, and the high school was built for 900.
Okay. How many students do we have currently?
1,500. So we're about half-capacity. The building, the district as a whole was built for about 3,200 students. We're at 1,510 today.
Okay. And that seems just to be going down for the next foreseeable future, at least.
Actually, it's pretty, so we are back up. Our enrollment last year was 1,463, and right now, we're at 5, 1,510. So actually, our enrollment's moving, moving in the other direction. Not significantly so, but by about 50 students.
Okay. And then with this plan, obviously, it's just mainly about the high school, but are there plans for the other buildings, what to do with those?
So we have, in the initial capital study that we had done, it actually outlines all of the work that's needed to be done in each building. In addition to that, it lays out what specific projects are that should be done and when. It's pretty detailed. However, when we come in, if the feasibility study is approved, and the architects and engineers come in, they're going to essentially redo a lot of that work, and will give us an updated sense of the direction we should go in.
Okay. So currently, the plan is to keep all the buildings?
For now. I mean, that's what we're doing for now, but we need to wait and see what the feasibility study would show.
Okay. That's all I had.
Anyone else?
Just to follow on to that last topic, is, we haven't seen requests for any large repairs and maintenance, other than the, you know, what's going on in the high school, which you're probably finished with, the asbestos remediation. But once you get through the feasibility study, I presume you have a better sense of the facility directions you're going to go, and which ones you're going to start doing some repairs, which might be, you know, fairly significant. Because I remember seeing, that was very thorough, very detailed, did put priorities, both from safety perspective, as well as condition perspective, is how I described the priorities identified. But we haven't had to fund any, you know, repairs in the last couple of years, other than the asbestos. So I expect you're going to come for some at some point.
Well, and actually, the asbestos, I'm glad you mentioned that, because the asbestos work, because we were accepted into the MSBA pipeline, you might remember that that was supposed to be at the tune of about 250,000 total. That actually was shifted to about a $75,000, just monitoring and cleaning.
Gotcha.
Because, you know, the hope from DLS is that, you know, this will move forward, and we'll be able to...
Fix that.
...have a building that won't have asbestos in it, and then we'll have to deal with that. So instead of continuing to throw money after...
Yeah.
...that issue.
Makes sense.
Yeah. Put it into a new build.
So I have a question. So do you have, you have any idea or thoughts what you're going to do with the other buildings?
I don't, it all depends on what the, what the final outcome from the feasibility study is. Again, I don't know if anybody wants to speak to any of that, but...
So no thoughts at all, what you would do?
There's a lot of ideas that, you know, we've heard from different, you know, different groups, different stakeholder groups. The elementary schools aren't ours, so we don't have any say over any of that. We, you know, essentially, when the town is ready, we would turn the buildings potentially just back over to the town to make some decisions with. I don't get the sense the middle school would come offline. It's our newest building, and that was in the statement of interest, as a big kind of player in terms of trying to get that built out as close to capacity as, as we can. And then, like I said, that, you know, Millville, MES, we lease it, belongs to the town of Millville, and the complex, we lease it from the town of Blackstone. So we've heard conversations from, you know, different stakeholder groups, but that is not, those aren't the decisions. I know we're going to need a home somewhere, so just putting that out there. The central office people. Hopefully, we're not out on the street.
And out of this study that you, you had done, the capital planning study, what was addressed in that, from that study? Like, what are the big items that were addressed in that study that have been taken care of or addressed?
Oh, gosh, that is a huge question. We've done a lot, more on the smaller capital side, like, you know, paving, pointings, you know, sidewalks, those types of, like, smaller projects. We haven't done any of the major. Part of the issue is, when you, particularly with the high school, once you start doing a certain level of repairs, you run into ADA issues. So, and then, once you kind of open that can of worms, it's got to all be fixed. And so hence why we went through the feasibility study, like the MSBA route, because between that, the systems and the asbestos, the repairs are about $40 million, just the high school. And there's no pipeline or pathway for us to do that with MSBA. Right now, our reimbursement percentage from MSBA is 59%. So we're paying...
That's higher than the boiler project, isn't it?
It is. Yeah. So we're paying now, like, 41 cents on the dollar.
Wow.
Yeah. So it's, it's a really good time.
That's a good time, yeah.
Whereas the straight repairs, there's no...
No reimbursement.
Yeah, it's on the town.
Right.
100% cost.
100%. That's why we're striking a...
Yes.
...on this issue, yeah.
Does anyone from Capital Planning have any questions? No? Okay.
So I would ask Capital Planning folks if they want to take a vote tonight or wait until there's a public hearing. I mean, if you're comfortable taking a vote, I look to your, you know, you're good to take a vote tonight. Okay. You're good, Helgi, for that? Jen, you're good as Capital Planning? So I guess what I would do is take a motion to recommend the article from Capital Planning.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Okay. Any discussion on the matter? So for Capital, all those in favor, I'll start with Helgi.
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
And Peter's aye. So you got a 5-0 recommendation of Capital. That way, we don't have to meet again, but we can, and maybe change the leadership. Otherwise, if you're moving on in the topics, I would ask Capital to, we can adjourn.
Adjourn.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to adjourn at 7:29 PM.
Is there a second for Capital to adjourn?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor? Helgi, we're adjourned in Capital. Jason?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Peter's aye.
All right.
Thanks. I appreciate you all coming tonight.
I have one quick, last question. Do we have any idea of what the scope of the cost for the project, if the, once the feasibility study, if it passes and all that? Do we have any idea of what the ballpark might be for that?
For, like, for, for the final project?
Yes, yeah.
So what we do know, I don't have an answer, because it depends on a few things. It depends on the grade configuration, because again, remember, each student will get essentially 175 square feet. And not everything counts for reimbursement. Some of the renovations will, some of the renovations won't. And right now, the average cost per square foot, and it depends where in Massachusetts you're building, but it can range anywhere from 650 per square foot to upwards of 800, if you're out in the Boston area. So it all kind of depends on the size, the enrollment, and then what the average cost per, per square foot is. But you can do some kind of general math and estimate if you have, you know, 500 students, and that's 175 square feet per student, times, you know, $700 per square foot, you can do a ballpark. I knew the calculators were going to come out. But, but at the end of the day, it's, it's a little risky, because we don't, we really don't know. And then...
That would be $61 million.
Then there's... Then there's contingencies that go on top of that, and then there's the reimbursement rate for the final project.
It could be $25 million, split between the towns, assuming a 59%.
On 4:1 ratio.
Yeah, assuming a 59%.
$25 million for the project on Millville's end?
No, no, no. That's between Blackstone and Millville. So then, if we do us, say, 25% rough and tough, it'd be 6.3 million for Millville over 30 years, right? So then, if we divide that by 30-
Well, yeah, there's, yeah, there's no contingencies in that.
209,000 per year.
But she's going to hold you to that number that she made up.
Yeah, I'll hold her made up that number.
$190.
I was going on the record, don't hold me on that.
Usually, you put another 20 million in contingencies on top of that.
Yeah.
I think at one point, we were talking like 90 million was-
Yes.
That was for a six through 12. Yeah.
Right. Biggest. Okay. So let's look at the biggest number and hopefully-
The fortunate thing is, we're, we're at the low end of prevailing wage here. That's why I said, in Boston, with Boston and other places, it goes up, because the prevailing wage is a lot.
It's a cheaper build out here than, yeah.
So, wait, what was the larger number that we were?
800.
800?
It could be 800, like Boston.
That's for Boston.
Prevailing wages up here.
Oh, right, right, right. Okay.
Southern Worcester County, prevailing wage is a lot lower.
They run into a lot of storage issues. There's nowhere to put the, you know, materials and the equipment. We have, we have lots of space.
We have space.
We want to have that problem here.
I did look up Oxbridge, did their high school 10 years ago, it was in 2012, it was $45 million for 110,000 square feet, and they got 22 million reimbursed, so they got less than half 10 years ago.
Yeah.
11 years ago. 2012, August 2012.
It's probably double.
So.
Just with inflation.
It would be a big shot in the arm, too, for the communities, because we are the last, I only mention this because you mentioned Oxbridge, we would be the last ones in the region.
In a new school.
Like, in this immediate area to get a new high school, which would be important.
Or half a new high school.
Right. Should be important.
I'm glad that's stated.
Yeah.
Yep.
Now, as long as they, my big concern was that they weren't going to look at the other schools, and then we kind of have a similar issue. So if they're going to come up with, here's to this, and here's the recommendations for the school district, I think that's really helpful.
My sense is there will be some consolidation, there has to be. Like, we just have too much space.
Yeah.
And I think we all, that, that helped us in COVID.
Yep. It was fantastic in COVID.
Now it's time to move forward.
Yeah. Any other questions regarding the feasibility study?
None.
Okay. Thank you for coming.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. So moving on to planning board zoning articles. So I had everyone, I asked Peter to print this out. This is a survey we did in 2022, so it's actually not that old. It's from April, I think, is when I put together all the final numbers and things like that. So it's very small, because I did it one wide. But the last row right here, this one, what that says is, how would you like the town to handle annual town meeting and special town meeting? So, one, the, and the options were keep things moving, so that meant, you know, as soon as business for the town comes up, we're going to work on it, resolve it, and move it along. And the other one was annual town meeting for most things and special town meeting for urgent requests. And so, the tally on that was 26 for keeping the annual town meeting for most business and special town meeting for special requests, and then 20 for kind of moving things along as fast as we possibly can. So I know that's only 46 answers, and it wasn't like 44 to 2. It wasn't like this overwhelming majority, but we did ask the question of the community, how would you like us to run the town? And that was the answer that we got. So, you know, Peter mentioned that there was members, someone had come forward and said, yeah, do you want to come up?
I do, absolutely.
Okay. And said, like, you know, we did a lot of work on this, we really want to get this resolved. And I understand that, because that's how I would like to do things. But when the community came back and said, you know, we really would like to keep things running with this kind of separation of duties, that was the response back. So if, I guess, Jason, like, is this kind of, like, urgent or laying the groundwork for the annual town meeting or?
So I think, I think what I'd like to say to this is that we have an active board, we have a full board, we're motivated, and we're producing. So to squash that over the vote of six people difference, I just disagree with that. And I don't think it's going to take a long time to submit these. They're very simple, they're very low, we call them low-hanging fruit, they're the lowest fruit we have. We're talking grammatical corrections, we're talking-
Okay.
We're talking really simple stuff. There's no drama here. This is something that we could pass these three articles and then start on the next one.
Okay.
So we have forward momentum, we have, we're, we're in motion. And we're doing the things that right now seem simple, but we're setting the groundwork to start protecting the town on things that are more controversial. If we don't get this groundwork set up, we can't address adult use district, we can't protect ourselves on different things, we can't do different zoning things.
So that might make it kind of more urgent then, if we can-
It's not, we can call it urgent, but we can just call it common sense, too. These are just three articles that we want to present. We're a board that's working, and I think to squash that would be silly. And this shouldn't wait until the next one, because we can't work on the next phase of this.
Until you finish this.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's step one.
Yep. So that would kind of fall into the-
Yeah. We as a board, all, this is all of our opinion, I believe.
Yeah.
Because we just had a meeting.
No, I just, that was kind of, you know, where we asked everybody what they thought, that's-
Yeah, I know, but if we'd known that before, we may have not put the effort into what we've tried to accomplish.
Yeah.
And it was dismissive, you know, to, to say, we don't think we should address these at the special town meeting or the annual town meeting, excuse me, just kind of deflated the sales. It was just one of those things.
I'm sorry, who, when was someone-
No, no, I was just saying to not do this.
Oh, oh.
Which was just out of the blue at the last BOS meeting. That was-
It wasn't dismissive, it was basically what we had asked people in town.
Yeah, we didn't know where that came from, though, like-
It came from the survey that we did.
From '22.
From '22, yep. That we sent out to everyone in town to fill out, and so-
46 responses, 20-
We had 60 responses, but only 46 people answered that question.
I got you. So that's, that's my two cents. So, for what it's worth.
Okay.
Thanks.
Would it help if they summarized, or Cliff Notes version of what these are?
Yeah, that would be great.
Can we do it?
Yeah.
Dylan, I'm junior town planner.
I love your Halloween sweater.
Thank you. So we have three warrant articles. The board wanted to separate these out because they sort of, they're about different things, and we didn't want to combine and get things sort of confused. So I'll start with number one here, correcting major residential development definition in the zoning bylaws. This one is definitely something to protect the town more. Right now, there's a line at a major residential development in the use regulation chart, which is allowed by right in all the districts. So it allows for what it looks like, you could have seven residences on, on one lot, and it's just allowed by right, which doesn't make any sense. So what we looked at was that the open space residential development is what this is talking about. There's no definition for major residential development. This is just not defined properly. This is about open space residential development, and needs to be explained as such. A major residential development within an open space district, you can do that. And it does need a special permit, it's not by right. If it's an open space development, it needs a special permit. So it just needs to be clarified, because otherwise, you could have someone come in and say, I'm going to put a major residential development wherever I want, and it's allowed by right. So that's a correction.
Okay.
Does that one make sense? Does that one make sense?
Yes.
That one seems important.
So, right now, the way it's worded with the major residential development, if somebody owns a property and they wanted to put up to seven residences on that property, they could do that, right?
They could argue their case. Technically, it looks like it is allowed, but it, there's also a, I think, a contradiction in there. It says you can't have more than a two-family, but you can have seven families. So they could argue their case, but-
Welcome to our world.
Yeah. So then, you're not supposed to-
So now this will correct it to-
Open space residential development. So you can have-
Which would mean that would be limited to, to then?
No, this would be, if you're in an open space residential development in the, in the overlay district, then yes, you could put these larger complexes there. But that's a completely different situation than if you're just going to put seven families in one building. This is a very special development that preserves open space. Usually, I think it's like village living, so smaller buildings, all surrounded by some green space in the middle, something like that. The use of major residential development in the language does not fit, does not make any sense here. It's for open space residential development, OSRD.
Do we have any open space residential development zones in the town?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a specific bylaw about it.
Okay.
And this is what that's supposed to be about, but it just wasn't, no one mentioned, OSRD is what we're talking about here.
Okay.
The second one, this is the planning board has been looking at trying to open up the Millville's welcoming of small businesses into the Village Center and commercial business districts. Right now, you need a special permit to do virtually anything in town. If you want to open an office space with three people working on their own computer, not having anyone come in, and, you know, no customers, just three people in office, you need a special permit for that. So this is the planning board trying to open that up a little bit. We're not trying to bring in big businesses or anything like that, but allow small businesses, small retail stores, allow for a professional office, restaurants, professional services like nail salon, banks, or insurance or real estate. Open it up a little bit to those businesses. Also, in this bylaw is a little bit of a limit on that. If it's over 10,000 square feet, yes, we'd like you to come in. But if you're just filling in one of the spaces that's available in town, it would be great to have a little bit of a vibrant commercial district in town. So this is trying to open that up, and I'll also mention undertaking establishment, allow that by special permit, and don't allow hotels and motels in residential districts. So trying to move all the businesses to business districts and keep the residential districts residential. And our third one, clarifying residential uses in the zoning bylaw. Number one here is just grammatical. To fit with everything else, agriculture should be agricultural, because the rest of them are AL words. Number two here is removing language for transient, so this is non-transient persons. We would like to clarify that more, talk about three people taking lodging for more than 30 consecutive days at a time. It defines what transient or non-transient means, and it also starts to put a little bit of language towards Airbnbs. We have to actually address that in the future, but we want to make sure that there's some language about people staying in one place for short periods of time. So this is talking about more than 30 days, and our next step would be to talk about less than 30 days. Gives it a little bit of a definition there. Number three here is restaurants. Right now, it says food and beverage to be consumed within the building. The planning board would like to change this to consumed on the premises, especially after COVID. We've seen a lot of restaurants maybe open up a porch space or something. So saying within the building sort of limits anything that's outdoors, any outdoor dining. If it's on their premises, that seems to just make a little more sense using the language of the bylaw there. Number four, right now, sale of motor vehicles incidental to the above is the language, and the above is a gas station or service station, filling station, things like that. So you can only sell cars if you already run another business. You can't sell cars as a business. So the planning board would like to move that to, that you can sell vehicles in town. Obviously, you'd get a class one or class two license, you'd go through a permitting process on that anyway, but it shouldn't be limited to people who already run a different business. Those are the only people who can sell cars in town. Those are the corrections we want to make.
So on that D4, under the sale of motor vehicles, as just a business, those buildings have to still be in the business district?
Yes.
Correct? Okay.
Yeah. All right, good, because there is one on Chestnut Hill near the community center, I always was trying to, but that's residential, vouchroll up there.
Yeah, yeah. Any business that is pre-existing right now, they'd, they'd still be allowed to run, if they changed owners, and there'd be a situation, they'd have to, they wouldn't be able to-
Well, it's been, no, no action for-
Yeah.
Previous owner has been deceased for-
Yeah.
Over 20 years.
Yeah, and, yeah.
And then the one that had after had no license to do so.
Yeah, yeah. I think, you know, especially in that, in that second by, warrant article we have there, that would be another situation where, I'm not exactly sure where the sale of motor vehicles is exactly, if I look at the bylaws. But we're trying to say, if this is a residential district, we shouldn't have businesses there. We have a wonderful area that could be used for commercial business, and it's great to put it all there, because then you drive through and you realize you're in Millville, you don't just drive through and not even realize you've passed through a town. We want to make it look like this is a town, and people can stop here and, and buy a car, get their nails done, stop at the bank, make it a destination, don't make people driving into residential neighborhoods to get something done.
Any other questions for Dylan? Nope? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And other articles? Peter, over to you.
Sure. So again, it's a rough draft, yet your next one will be the presumably final draft, and in it, we'll have to the, you see Article 1, that's the standard finance committee monetary increases. Bills of a prior fiscal year, there will be some bills of a prior fiscal year related to MES water, and I've submitted some bills for payment, which were adjustments to the bills for things that we didn't, weren't authorized. And so, you'll, you'll have hard numbers by next meeting and some backup information to, so you know what that's, what's going to be in there. And those bills, the amounts might change, and even other bills might surface of a prior, of the prior fiscal year, right up until town, the special town meeting. Where it's covered is in the motion. So the, the items and the amounts are listed in the motion, not in the warrant.[1613.01] So this is the warrant wording, okay? Likewise, to the extent fiscal 24, and again, it's rough draft, and I was hasty getting through this, okay? To the extent there are any budget adjustments of what's already been approved for the budget, and that, you know, would be subject to finance committee as well, and you all for recommendation or not. And to the extent there are any for which I have nothing at the top of my head except possibly MES water, but I wouldn't even, I can't give you what that might be tonight, and we'll get into MES update later, okay? But that would be the type of thing where we see a budget isn't sufficient, and it isn't sufficient to carry up to May 1st, because it, May 1st is when you can move things around by transfers from other accounts that haven't, don't have money being util, have excess money in them. And one of those would be, once again, Tri Valley, the one or two students they thought they were going to have, they'd have none. So that's what we have budgeted there won't be needed, as an example, okay? You just went through the feasibility study, you went through the planning board articles. I'm waiting on wording from KP Law on the, you know, Board of Health member as an agent, okay? And so what I'll cite to you, you might have seen the packets, but it's from the conflict of interest law, and council cites that no member of a municipal commissioner board shall be eligible for appointment or election by members of such commission, blah, 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 under the supervision of such commissioner board. No former member may serve either. The provisions of this section shall not apply, though, to a member of a town commissioner board if such appointment or election has first been approved at an annual town meeting of the town. I believe we can get into the special town meeting as well. So I'm looking for wording from council on that. I don't have it yet. But the, you do have a situation here in town where one of the members of the Board of Health actually serves as an agent on occasion. And this is just a, you know, it's a housekeeping thing, but it's a housekeeping thing to comply with the law. It's not that there's any ill intent by anyone, it's just dotting some i's and crossing some t's, okay? On the last article, which would be Article nine, not 16, because again, this, what you see there is the actual article approved at last town meeting for tax title payment plans. And it turns out the wording that was drafted by council and used in the article was not accepted by the state. So we've got to get better wording from council, so I'm waiting on that. And that's all she wrote. There were no other articles submitted by the time the warrant closed last week. So this is what you have, okay? And you'll be looking to vote and approve and sign the warrant at your next meeting because it has to be posted by that Wednesday, 5 o'clock, basically.
One question. So the wording from our attorneys wasn't approved by the state?
Correct.
Are they going to fix this for free at this point? Because
That's a fair question.
Fair question.
That's kind of why we pay them.
That's right.
Have them word it correctly, at least.
That's right.
Yes, it is.
Fair question. And there, we had talked about possibly a bill of a prior year or putting a warrant article related to the fire truck repairs. The town accountant's going to handle that through normal town accounting processing. So no need for any town meeting on that.
Through current fiscal year. For the current fiscal year and all the prior
Go into last year, it'll be recorded as last year's expense because that's when it belongs. We consulted with our auditors as well on that, and they concur wholeheartedly, so.
Okay, so before we move on to the warrant, are there any concerns with any of these articles on the warrant? Is everyone comfortable with having them on there and move forward? Okay, I think the planning board made a good case that this is laying foundational work for moving forward. So, but just since we did ask people what they wanted to do.
I think that's something we could maybe in the future, because my issue on that was just lack of notice, I think. Maybe going forward, I don't know if there'd be a way to like purposely legislate that special town meetings are only for urgent or make a definition for that.
Okay.
I don't know. Is that something we could study?
For the annual town meetings, we could maybe have a definition of what annual town meeting and special town meeting is for. That will be very limiting, though, moving forward.
No, I, I think the other way you can approach it is through the Board of Selectment policies and procedures, because you control the warrant anyway. So if you set up a policy specifically stating something like that, you can always refer to that.
Yeah.
And then it's just giving folks a heads up versus having voters approve something that otherwise restricts what you, you might, you know, there might be a board in the future that might change that policy.
That's true.
Yes, of course.
So my, my only thing with that is, why, why are we trying to restrict it? Is it just for, to make life easier for finance? And I'm not being fresh, I'm
No, 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 so, no, that's a fair question. So I, when we asked, I think the annual town meeting gets better attendance. So when you're doing bylaw changes and things like that, you want to make sure that people are there to vote on it. Now, you could say they should be at both. That's not an unfair thing to say, but most people attend the annual town meeting. And so we want to make sure that we're hearing from the most people possible.
It's, it's voluntary. If you want to be heard, you have to show up. And my thing is
You're not wrong.
And I'm not just talking about my board, what I'm saying is that we have a lot of work to do.
Yeah.
We're already planning up to the next meeting.
Yeah.
And I plan on doing the same thing afterwards for as long as I'm, I'm a part of the board. So I think I, it's really going to cost us 10 to 15 minutes at a, at a town meeting to present if we have things we're trying to make motions on. The reason we only picked three was so that it's easily digestible. We can understand what we're presenting, and it's not too much. Like, we're not going to try to dominate any one meeting. We thought we'd spread it out so that it's, again, more digestible.
Yeah.
So that's, that's my, that's my take on it. And like I said, we're a productive board right now. We're fully staffed, people want to do this, we show up every meeting, we do the work. So I don't, to have it go to one time a year, we're going to try to cram too much stuff into one or two or three. It could be 10 warrant articles. And then we're doing that on top of a budget presentation with all the holds, that turns into a really big meeting.
So I agree with you, I voted the other way on the survey. Like, I voted we should move the business of the town along.
Right. So that's, that's
But that's not how people, that was only 46 people answered.
Yeah.
So we'll see if there's a lot of outrage. You didn't listen to the survey! Then we'll know.
Yeah, we'll see, we'll check Facebook.
That's right, so we'll see.
Find out tonight.
Yeah. But
If we, if we do it every 12 months, progress is going to be
Slow.
Brought to 50%.
Painfully slow, no, I'm, you are, you're, we agree on this, I feel the same way.
The only thing I would say is that the annual town meeting is required by law, special town meeting is not.
Right.
That's why it's called a special town meeting, because that's only supposed to be for things that are of exceptional need, that need to happen, like, for instance, I think
We know how Andrew voted now.
Yeah, we do. But, you know, the, the adjustments to the, by the planning board are totally fine. I don't see a problem with those certain other issues, things that we've had in the past, which were not little things or adjustments to bylaws or something like that, that's where the main issue comes from, because that's not, you know.
Our stuff's a mess, we're, we're trying to make progress.
Oh, it's all going to be there.
In the past years, as selectmen, we, we struck a lot of special town meeting articles and, you know, pushed them out to May, only because they, they weren't, you know, the fate or progress of the town wasn't going to be affected by voting in November or May. So we put those things always May, always May. And that was through our own discretion. And, but anything that needed to be voted on in November got, got on the warrant, you know, but we just tried to limit it so that, you know.
You're really minutia.
So. But definitely, you don't want to screw up progress. And a small town with the limited volunteers, when you get a chance to move on something, you got to move on.
Yeah.
So
All right.
One quick thing.
Yes.
I do have one problem with one article, which is Article three. Is it just the MES water that we're expecting to adjust, or?
Well, that's a, that's a boilerplate article, first of all, so that's always in there.
Yeah.
And, and where there've been, you've had in the prior year, since I've been here, there's not been any adjustments, so you've taken no action. On this one, all I know about would be potentially MES.
So that'd be just because of like what type of adjustments we're making? If it's small ones, or if it's like?
Well, so all it really is, is trying to get the, you know, a budget's an estimate, right? But you have to, you're subject to it, that's the appropriation. And so we already know we're, you know, 50% on, nearly 50% on the MES annual budget so far, because of all that had to be done to get the thing going early on in July. So we know we're going to run out, even though we know, we also know that the rate will of cost is declining per month, but we're still likely to run out. So the question is, how quickly do we run out? And therefore, in order to avoid a special town meeting to fund that budget, otherwise, absent the appropriation remaining prior to May 1st, when you can move things around between budgets, you can't spend any more money, you're done. So if we're done with MES water, everything stops.
That would be very bad.
And that's impractical. So that's really the whole objective. So it's a crystal ball, trying to get through the end of the year, but certainly at least to May.
And that's the only item that we're
That I know, that's correct.
Anything else? Well, speaking of MES water, why don't we take it out of order? We'll go to old business, I'll move B up, and we'll do an MES water status update, if any. Peter and I met with Mary Jude today and had a really good conversation, so, um, do you want to go? Okay, so I'll hit on a couple of things, probably stealing some of Peter's thunder, you can jump away.
Happy you do that.
Okay. So first is the SCADA system for remote operations has been installed and is, they're tweaking it, but it's installed and working, so that's enabling us to get a better alignment around
Remote monitoring.
Remote monitoring, yes, thank you. Anything else on, I was going to jump right to the two things with Mary Jude, is there anything else there on the
Well, we don't really have any results yet, but we fully anticipate in the very near term that notices will have to go out to the people who are in the facility right now. Their violation notices for the ongoing quarterly, annual quarterly average for the disinfection byproducts, then there are two kinds, haloacetic acids, which we are seeing declines, so we're right, most current things, I'm, as I understand it, is below the maximum contaminant level the MAST DEP has. But the trihalomethanes are failing. We saw that updated, so there will be a notice, the quarterly average will, 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 will hurt us. So we're, it'll take us a while to get out of those quarterly averages, right? So notices will go out. It still is disinfection byproduct and all of the water quality versus health issues that there are perceptions versus realities, and we've heard and talked about those on numerous occasions. But nonetheless, there's violations based on the measurement criteria of MAST DEP, and we have to put out those violation notices. So we fully expect to do those. There might be one other violation notice related to something not being done back in January in a, in a particular process, and that was a miscommunication between DEP and the operator. And it's a procedural issue, not a water quality thing, but it's a notice violation.
Okay. And then we spoke with Mary Jude today, and she was really helpful. So we sat, asked her, you know, could we purchase bulk water to get us to where until we tap into Uxbridge, which is, Peter will have an update on his conversations there. And she said, no, can't. So this is not how you fix the issue. And she would not approve an extended bulk water purchase, because this would be looking at years of bulk water, and she was not comfortable with that. She said, you have to fix the system. So I said, okay. And I know that we probably want to see some progress by the end of the year. So the other option is to go back to what we do have in the corrective action plan around permanginate. And she did say, you know, why haven't you moved forward this? And it's kind of, it was a cost thing and an operator thing. We were hoping that we could get the current system working the right way, but it's just, it's not happening fast enough. So permanginate would completely eliminate the system of disinfection byproducts. The flip side of that is if you put too much permanginate, the water can be pink, but it's safe to drink. But it's going to be pink. Me, I mean, it's not going to be pink, but there's the possibility of pink water. So I said, you know, Mary Jude, you're going to have to come to one of our meetings and tell everybody that even though the water's pink, it's perfectly fine. And she said she, it won't be her, she'll send one of her super smart scientists. But that's kind of the flip side of that, is that if we move forward with permanginate and it, it's working, it'll completely take care of disinfection byproducts, but there is a possibility of pink water, which could be pretty.
For which she said, there's, they don't have any contamin, contaminant level requirements.
Yes. And we would not be out of compliance, the color doesn't matter with the compliance. So, anything else from Mary Jude? Those are the two big things I
No, we talked about, you know, we did talk about the Uxbridge memorandum of understanding that the town has signed. We're waiting on Uxbridge to have a meeting to approve their signature, but, you know, the fact that I co-drafted it with the town manager over there, she was very encouraged to hear that. She talked a little bit about the upcoming grant cycle, and, you know, it's, it keeps extending out, she doesn't know when. But we're, we're positioned well on that process of bringing water to MES, but that's a, that's three years out before, that's really realistically likely to happen, which is why she was immediate in her response on the bulk water. Says it's, it's still going to be years before you get there. And anyway, she, I think she appreciated, we're trying to figure things out, and she was part of, there were three of us trying to figure things out, so she was very helpful and appreciative of that. So I think we're, you know, we're better to be her friend, and she's very responsive to helping give us the right approaches to things, on how we go about what we're doing. And the permanginate, she suggested or asked, why aren't you considering the permanginate? In part because that's something that it seems that, you know, school leadership certainly was anticipating, we were anticipating, it didn't happen. We thought we could, you know, that things might happen quicker, but realistically, they're not likely to. And the permanginate solution does solve the disinfection byproduct problem for which all these darn notices are going out on. So it was, you know, someone's different perspective, like, duh, yeah, I think that's probably the way to go.
You guys have this in writing, right?
What in writing?
From Mary Jude?
Not yet.
No. What, have what in writing specifically?
This response?
No.
I'd vote to get it.
Yeah, so that's, we talked about that today right before this meeting, is that we would want to have a discussion, especially around the color of the water.
Yep.
Do you think we're lying to you, Rich?
No.
Okay.
But I want it in writing from the state. So they can't
I would not be lying.
Right, but I don't want them to come back later and say, oh, no, you can't use the school still.
Yeah.
Thanks, you know.
Yeah, no, for sure, because, well, we mentioned having her come to a meeting and tell
Yep.
The story. Because I think, even if we have it in writing, don't worry about the color of the water, I don't know that that will go over well. And like the wa, here's the thing, that's the worst case scenario, I do keep talking about pink water. That may never, ever happen, but it could happen. And if it does, someone's going to take a picture of this, look at the water at the school, it goes all over Facebook.
She'd be okay with the kids drinking pink water, but not trucking in potable water?
Yes.
That pass all the tests.
That pass all the tests, and she's not okay with that?
We're not addressing the issue, is her response.
Well, long-term, we are. I mean, we have an MOU, and Peter's working with Uxbridge. Yeah, that's a long-term, but we wouldn't truck in passing water, but it's okay for kids to drink pink water. Okay? Not logical at all.
I'm not in charge.
I know.
I'm doing what MAST DEP says.
I don't think we need to, I'm not going down that rabbit hole right now, but
All right.
They tell us to do something, I do it. I told her, whatever you tell me to do, I will do it.
I want that in writing.
Yeah.
But we are on track for their approval process, they're happy about the MOU, they're happy we filled out a survey that said, well, here's what we're thinking of doing. You know, one of the questions is if you get water and, and it, and what we want to do aligns with what Uxbridge needs to do and helps there, that helps them, that's why they're interested in dancing with us, right? Whether you confound the thing by providing water off of that, you know, I'm just looking at the solution of getting water at MES. I, I don't want to get distracted, but that's a separate issue, which, if the opportunity presents itself and the cost structuring is done right, there are potential other benefits to provide maybe other water to others in other locations. But right now, that's
Yes, go to the table, please.
Jason, 510 Chestnut Hill. So basically, with permanginate, we're back to where we were six months ago?
Yep.
Okay, so our options are to stay brown and out of compliance with what we have.
We're not brown, we're clear.
Okay, clear, but, but out of compliance, okay. Or potentially have the risk of having pink water, but almost immediately being within what the DEP wants
Yep.
And eliminating notices.
Yep.
Do we know the cost increase, or were we already budgeted for that?
So we have ARPA funds that the board has approved, for which we're targeted to pay for whatever might happen there, right? The hardest, the highest cost part of it was really changing out the green sand filtration media, which has happened and already been paid for. So it really is just the chemical, and it's, you know, and whatever just, you know, puts the chemical in, there's probably some kind of pump type of thing.
Small chemical feed pumps.
It's a chemical feed pump, it's not a big
The reason for the 180 on the permanginate is because of what?
So we, we The chem, the chlorine was not being applied properly, it was, it was ineptly applied, that's the word I would best use to describe it by a former operator. Our current operator has been working to get the chlorine levels right and has been doing a good job, but operating somewhat blindly. So part of it, because someone physically has to go in and look at a dial here and turn a valve and look at a, you know, screen over here on some, you know, processor and so forth.
Just as a citizen's point of view.
Yep.
Dr. Gulick was very confident that this would be an immediate thing, well, not, maybe not immediate, but he seemed like
That could get under control.
Well, he, he has
I feel like we're back to where we were six months ago, we could have avoided possibly an MES issue that, and I know hindsight's 2020, I get that.
Yep.
And a failing test result, again.
But where if we go to permanginate, we'd be passing, again, not saying that the quality wa, that was worst case hypothetical, that pink water. And I'm not wrong, I, and I get you.
Yep.
It just seems like
So we were waiting in early July for the permit application from the previous water operator, and instead we got a report.
It just seems like we, we got into all this trouble with the school board because we didn't want to do that, and now we're doing
We did want to do it, it didn't get done, and we, then we thought we could manage, you
Faster.
The problems were created by inept operation. The problems were created by inept operation.
But didn't we tell the DEP we were changing the permanginate? Wasn't that part of our corrective action plan?
Yep.
Did a 180.
We did not.
So it seems like we shot ourselves in the foot with this. That's all.
Yeah.
Anyways, I'm just saying it out loud.
Nope.
And $30,000.
I can't catch a check in my own reach, sorry.
No, so hindsight's 2020. So I think that, so we were, Peter and I were, were expecting something for the previous water operator. He's like, hey, I'm going to get something. And early July. And we thought it was the permit. And I was like, oh, good.
There was a report that we're not paying for.
And it was a report that we didn't ask for instead. And then we're like, are you going to do this? And that's when we had the meeting with Mary Jude on July 12th. And she said, do you have the permit for me? I said, no, I have this report. And she's like, I don't need this report. I need the permit, Jennifer. And I was like, I know. And that's when I offered her my kidney. And she's like, that's not going to help. And then we had, then the previous operator resigned abruptly on the 26th.
Yes.
And then on the, and then we had Dr. Gullik come in and he's like, I can get this up and running.
I don't remember, did the previous water operator resign because we didn't want to switch to permanginate?
No, we wanted to. He, but he didn't provide the.
We didn't have the permit.
And there are a variety of other issues for which he was trying to hold the town hostage.
Is it her? I'm sorry, I don't know.
He initially suggested permanginate.
Yep.
Back in, you know, someday.
He actually predicted what our corrective action was going to be.
And we were brought into it.
He wrote the initial corrective action plan. And the next phase was for the permit. For, Peter knows the name of the form.
It's a WS 34 permit, whatever that is. I haven't seen one, so I don't know really.
Yes. And then we didn't get that. And then we had this other system in place. So and Dr. Gullik's like, I can get this working. And we were like, okay, great.
Yeah. And he's not, he, like, we haven't had the discussion with him about this permanginate thing because he's been traveling. And so he's back tomorrow and I'm going to lay it on him. And we'll see where that goes.
That'll be an explosive conversation.
Might be.
I'm waiting for Andrew to pop out and say something, would he?
No.
Are you up to speed on this?
Yes.
This contentious debate.
Mm-hmm.
Water.
Yep.
Well, we are driven by DEP ultimately, right?
Yep. Well, you know.
I have some reservations with this because they offered guidance and they have oversight. They certainly won't condemn a building because it's the Board of Health. Yet here we are getting guidance from DEP and they're telling us not to use a water solution that they previously approved prior because of some reasons. And it's not too clear to me why, but permanginate is the way to go. So kids can drink pink water.
It was a recommendation by her, why don't you still go down the permanginate road? That ma, makes great sense in the discussion we had today. Okay. And I, I think it probably does make sense more for the politics than the actual operation. Okay, there's that part of it.
For the politics, we're going to go down the permanginate road?
It's an acceptable solution. It gets rid of the disinfection byproducts. Because here's, here's the thing. I'll, I'll quote you what she said. The water not being safe is not accurate. That's what I heard today. But if you think of May 15th, what you heard was the water is not safe to drink and it's not safe to cook in, which is contrary to any water expert you would find in the United States. But was one of the reasons for the change in location of students.
I think we need to look forward.
So what does Dr. Gullik think of the chlorine versus permanginate?
I told you, I haven't spoken to him about it today. Tomorrow. I think he's still, like, he still hasn't, you know, he has, you can't get control of something like that in two months. It's hard. But everybody expects results. So here we are. We want results. Okay, we'll go to permanginate.
But he wouldn't want to dial in the chlorine?
He's been doing it. Yes.
So he's making traction?
Yes.
With the halo acidic acid he is, but with the, I'm not going to say.
Total trial, halo methane.
Yes. No.
No. And he doesn't know what's causing that problem. And there are solutions to that problem for which, you know, there's some engineering involved and so forth.
Currently using 135 gallons a day.
That's the huge challenge to make it right. That's the other part of it. You got, you got variables you got to play with, right?
Okay. It's a lot of money.
Agreed.
$30,000 in the first couple of months?
Well, do you have another solution, Rich?
No, not.
Bulk water.
Yeah, bulk water. We have that.
Can't get it by DEP. You can get it by short term.
Is that just her saying that she won't approve it? Or is that something that's governed by statute?
What if you remove this?
Not talking.
I'm, I'm, I, I'd like to see it in writing.
Okay. That's no prob, I'll send her an email tonight.
I believe she said it. So that's not the point of contention here. I just find it hard to believe that she would make that recommendation.
Bulk water is not a solution, direct quote.
Well, it's not a long-term solution. It's not a permanent fix.
Depends on how you define term.
One to three years is defined as a short term.
Hmm. I don't know about that.
Business class, economic class, accounting class, finance class.
We are dealing with a pretty powerful bureaucracy.
Well, and if she does get this in writing, is she going to be quoting any statutes or just giving us an opinion?
Hmm. I don't know.
And does it matter if we got rid of the system we have currently and just have bulk water instead?
That's what we asked her today.
No, 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 no. Removing the system.
Oh.
Until we get the piping in.
Correct.
We don't need a system if we have a.
Oh, that's true. So you want to take out all the equipment?
Shut it down.
You know, what are we doing with it anyway?
It's a bold move.
Deja vu.
It's like deja vu, Peter. All over again.
No, I'm just thinking out loud. But if you, I mean, you're talking about bulk water for drinking and cooking. You're still going to flush toilets. It doesn't have to mean.
So the bulk water would go into the main water tank. So it would be used for everything in the school. So there is no way to separate out, we don't have a separate drinking water piping system versus what we use for toilets and hand washing and things like that. So whatever we buy for bulk water would be used for everything in the school.
Well, and the current tankers are what, $2,200 for 9,000 gallons. We're currently at 135 a day. So we could have.
We have it cheap for the rest of this year. It would go up next year, but we'd have pre-K through one. And so if it's normally 800 gallons of water a day, call it 600. So if there's 9,000 in a tank, I can't believe I'm doing math like this. That's 15 days, I think.
Yeah.
So it'd be two weeks at $2,200 a week. So $4,400 a month.
But they were burning through the tank. They weren't burning through the tankers less than a week.
Way more students last year.
But they're also flushing the system.
Yeah. So you would need to do that.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Which was the majority of the water.
No, I'll, so I will, I just have time to decide. I have my job that I get paid to do today. And I had to do first.
Oh, come on. This salary doesn't cover all your bills?
It does not cover all my bills. So, but I would have no problem sending a note to Mary Jude and saying, what would you like to do? You know, can you give me, us more guidance on the bulk water? Cause we would, Matthew at the last meeting, Andrew suggested that we could do like, if we're, know we're going to be buying this very predictably, we could negotiate a contract with option to renew, like one-year contract, option to renew two and three. But so.
RFP.
Yeah. So. Yep. So anything else? Anyone have any other comments? Questions?
I have some comments, but I'm not going to. My mother told me.
Can't say anything nice. Don't say anything. Yep.
Do we have a EPA representative as opposed to a DEP? Cause I know this is, you know, DEP does state. But do we have an EPA representative talk to us about this? Just to see if there's any federal guidelines we could follow that contradict state guidelines?
I know. Dr. Gullik was at an EPA, a national EPA conference earlier in the month. That's where he, he was and then took some vacation. So he's probably back by now in Massachusetts. So I don't, I don't know that. I mean, I, I have met with the regional office EPA people some time ago. So there's somebody at the region they deal with. For, for example, we do get water from Uxbridge for a handful of homes on Kempton Street because of that site. And that's managed by EPA right now. So we could certainly reach out, but that, that's, I don't know if that's strategically wise to call in a dime on DEP with EPA, you know? I guess the way I would think about that.
Typically, the state is more stringent than the state.
Provide the guidance. Yeah.
So the states kind of have oversight here. And they have the guidelines.
Yeah. And they have policing powers over regulating.
Well, yeah, typically they tell you what you can do, not what you can.
So take for example, with Mast DEP, with Mary Jude, right? As the person stuck responsible for what's going on there, right? When she said that the town must provide bottled water, right? Which now we're switching to not individual single-serve bottles because that's what the state has changed. We, we, I asked her, I said, I am not aware of any particular statement of conditions or ruling that we're subject to that says do bottle water. Did I miss something? And she came back and said, no, but we're the DEP and we can certainly, if you want to, if you want us to write an order of conditions, we can do that. And you have so many days to appeal it if you so choose to. Otherwise typically what we say is really what you must follow. So that's where we're at.
I thought it would be unwise to push her on that.
Yeah.
But if you all feel differently.
Because we're the only town that does bottle water for disinfection byproducts. They don't do it in Springfield. They have horrible disinfection byproducts.
It gets worse, but.
So.
And we did say today, so at the conferences, Dr. Gullik said that, um, there's a, this is, there's just conversations around this and this may or may not happen. I'm leaning very hard towards probably. Is it okay to talk about?
Absolutely. Yeah.
Yeah. We could be, Millville could be one of eight test communities to be working with the EPA around PFAS. So they would work with us and like studying us and we'd get resources and things like that. And she knew about that. She goes, well, they kicked it over to us. So EPA always told us about that. So I think there's much more of a relationship between EPA and Mast DEP. So I think if we could say, hey, is, can we, she told us we can't use bulk water. I think this, did you tell them that? And she's like, yeah, I did. Like, okay, you can't use. I like, I think it would just be a circle. And then we would just hurt a relation, a positive relationship that we have right now. Cause Mary Jude, when Peter and I asked to meet with her, she met for us with an hour, for an hour's stay. She was great. She was like, you know, you know, helped us maybe take a step back and see the forest through the trees a little bit better. For me personally, it's like, why aren't you just doing this? I was like, I originally it was this and now this. She's like, okay, well, you've tried it. It's not working. What do you think? And I was like, it's a good question. Maybe we should just move forward the permanginate if it's definitely going to solve the problem.
So Dr. Gullik met with the folks who run this program out at this conference and he's reached out to them just to say, we'd be, you know, look forward to exploring further whether we can be part of the Office of Research and Development of the EPA and it's what's called a Technical Assistance Project for treating emerging contaminants, which is PFAS. And he's at this conference, the, you know, they keep talking about a four parts per trillion is where they're likely to go. But they're not likely to get to wherever they're going for another year or so, frankly. Okay. So it's all still speculation. Uxbridge PFAS is registering in the teens. Ours registers in the teens. What, if it was a four parts per trillion, neither entity would be compliant. Doing test samples, Rich was learning about it while he was out there. If someone who is handling the test samples for PFAS cannot have clothing on that was, that used a dryer sheet. Cause it has PFAS in it. It would contaminate the samples. I mean, it's crazy what, what's likely to happen from all of it. Just crazy. That's right. You're getting, yeah. So.
PFAS is in everything. It's shocking.
It's going to be challenging for anyone to comply and do it right, I would argue. So I think they're still figuring it out. But there's plenty of money to throw around from the federal level through, down through DEP and so forth.
So back to the bulk water. All right. I get it. She says, no, absolutely not, right?
I will ask her to clarify.
Absolutely. And I'll respect that answer.
Okay.
When I have an explanation with it. On why the state says no to something that makes total sense to us.
In writing.
All right. I'll send her that email. Roland wants to know.
Well, I'm, I'm a need to know kind of person. I don't, I don't walk down the hallway because someone tells me to. I want to know why they want me to go to the other end.
We need clarification on that. Yeah.
Before we ask the kids to drink the pink water.
Yeah.
So it probably won't be pink.
Purple.
That would be, no, it probably won't be purple. But like that could happen, I guess. So.
But I, I, I do know that, that Dr. Gullik said it. As, as well as our former.
Water operator.
Water specialist.
He did talk about pink water. I know.
So.
Another reason why it hasn't.
Sounds like it's a good possibility, pink water.
Yeah.
You know, and you can't lie to the kids. You can, you could, you could, you know.
If they're going to.
Tell the elementary kids, oh, it's pink lemonade. Don't worry, drink it up.
Unicorn.
You know, and they'll, and they'll be drinking it, you know?
Peter's unicorn juice.
But that's not the proper fix.
So I guess if, if anyone had, like, I guess, so this is where we, we're, we need more time to fix the current system, which I, Dr. Gullik says he can get where, I believe he can. The problem is we want to have this resolved in time for the school to make sure they can put kids back in the fall. So that like, a, anyone have any other idea? Like I am, well, be your friend. I will bake you a chocolate pie. Like I will really take anything. It's, chocolate pie is good too.
With the new computer system, theoretically, he should be able to monitor the chlorine better.
Absolutely.
Yes.
At much less cost. Cause somebody doesn't have to be present.
So how much time? So here's the thing. So how much time do you need to give her to do that?
It's installed. It has internet issues with the school's internet.
Yeah.
So the ethernet isn't working right. That was.
Living in that area, I can tell you the internet is challenging.
Issues right now.
Yeah. And the installer's going back in there from what I understand tomorrow.
All right.
So this is, so we talked about the last meeting. We could, we'll give dark, we could operate as is with chlorine and try to get it all in compliance and blah, 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 until before, like by December 15th, like before the end of the year, before the end of the year break. But if that doesn't happen, then we have to, and I'll find, I'll confirm, but bulk water will be off the table. So if we wait until then to switch to permanginate. Now the switch over and all that stuff she says is, is a lot faster. Like it's not this, it won't take from July until December 15th. She seemed to indicate it would be like, I'm just going to say faster. She didn't give a specific day, so I don't want to guess. But it, so by the end of the school year, it would be up and resolved.
Well, that was the intention to hopefully have something done by January or so.
Yeah. So if we, I don't know if we can wait until December, maybe we should go to a school committee meeting and be like, these are our options. We can go to December 15th with what we have. I'll let you, I'll have a real answer on why we can't do bulk water or like, you know, the explanation. And be like, you know, if we can't do this, then we're going to pull the trigger on the permanginate. We can have the, maybe the permit. The engineering work on the permit and get it submitted. Mary Jude said, look, you get that to me. I'll put it to the top of the pile, Jen. So she was really, really helpful.
Yeah.
So we could still do that. And if we had it to the top of the pile, and then if we tried, gave Dr., actually, if we still gave Dr. Gullik until December 15th on the current system. But she didn't say, like, I got an impression even if we got her the permit, the.
Sooner she would have the permit approval.
By around December.
That's right.
So we could do both in parallel, but then it would be, okay, this is still not working. Now we're pulling the switch on permanginate and that would be our timeline. So that's, we'd have to talk to maybe the school. And be like, this, this is, this is the plan now. The new plan. Since the plan last week was not allowed. Yes, sir, of course.
Jerry Finn, 47 grocery, just a couple of questions.
Yeah.
Um, quick piece of mention, I think I sent a thing out on the bottled water, plastic bottled water. Is that not an element they can use now in the schools?
So we're, we're not being required by Mast DEP to be single-serve. But they would prefer that they, we're not going to be buying it for them. We're buying the five gallon jugs.
Yeah.
Correct. So you can't, the single-serve ones, I think the governor didn't want anyways.
Correct.
Correct.
So it would be nonsensical to try to continue to think we can use the, the single-serve plastic pipes.
Yeah. So we're not doing that, right?
I understand. I'm just saying, for, for future any reference, that's off the table.
Yes. So that's why, yes.
Right. That's gone thanks to the governor. It's gone. It's over, right?
Yes.
This permanginate kind of gets me. So we're talking about that, that potentially what we have here is an opportunity where, and I think I did hear that you said that Dr. Gullik had said that you, you may have, may have a potential for some pink water, correct?
Both water operators said that, yes.
Both said that. Okay. These, this Dr. Gullik is pronounced as being one of the best in the industry. Does he have any type of percentage that he could tell us that? Cause I don't think he can get away with pink water, period. I don't care. Who comes in, the Lord himself, I don't think is going to make a difference. So I guess my question is. So I guess my question is, um, what are the chances? Is it one in a million? One in, was it tri-five million trillion or whatever the pots are? Or is it something that, no, uh, in his experience, because he's the most experienced guy around.
It happens often or not often, yeah.
And he probably has seen it in other systems, because there's about half of the systems in the Commonwealth of the three and fifty-three cities and towns. Um, there's half of them that have had issues with water. So there has to be some rationale or thinking on this relative to his chances of one out of three, one of five hundred. You know, I, I heard what you said and now I'm getting myself worried about, "Wait a minute, pink water's not gonna work for anybody either."
Welcome to my world, Jerry.
Well, we're all trying to, we're all trying to help you in that world.
I know, I appreciate it. We're trying.
Through it, I know, but, um, I, I have to go around with these gentlemen here. I, I can't, for the life of me, understand that with, with the bulk. I just get, but let's just, let's just move on from that and say that's what it is.
I'll get more information.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's kinda critical. So, um, I just had those couple of questions. I just wanted to make sure that that, um, if we use that, um, permanganate, whatever it is.
Permanganate, yeah.
Thank you. If we use that, then another problem pops up. Um, there has to be some studies backwards on that or some other cities and towns. Everybody's seen, we said, both water operators, both of them said, "Oh, you should use..." Well, then it sounds to me like there would be probably, um, some definition that someone has used that in the past. If they have, there has to be some statistics on it, ones that Mr. Gulick, I'm sure, being renowned as he is, would be able to dig up for us.
I'll ask Mary Jude, too. Like, how often do you see pink water in permanganate system? Does it happen? Often? Not often?
Well, in all due respect, I'd, I'd like to get...
We'll do both.
I'd like to get analytical facts, not just a thinking.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, opinions are nice and everybody has them, but I'd like to see some statistics on it.
Special metrics.
Because I think we're getting to the point where this is, and I, I think the other thing is, if I'm not, um, if I'm not incorrect in this, I thought I heard from the superintendent that they have to have a definition as to the water usage or how they're gonna get the water for, by January for the following year.
I think it was like, they would like to see, so I think in January we need to, or, um, maybe, I don't know, was there a specific date? It was kinda like...
I haven't heard an actual date, but I would think by March, which is when we certify our budget.
Okay.
Really?
Okay, so by March for sure, but I think by January we wanna know, like, "Hey, we're working on this" and then by, like...
Yeah. Yeah, I thought, I thought I heard him say for him to be able to get, um, all the factions and planning.
Yeah.
That, uh, he would need, he would need a January first date.
It makes sense.
Well, it does. I mean, moving kids and, and budgets around and...
He's gonna want six months.
Buses and everything else. He needs the time.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we have to be receptive to the fact that that time is of what he's asking for.
No, yep.
Um, we can't keep sliding it down on him, so it gets, it gets punched up against the...
I think if we'd already had a passing quarter, we would be confident we were moving towards January.
Yeah.
But until we get a passing quarter, I mean, January's penciled in, we may not make it.
I, that's my point. That's my point. I'm thinking we'll make it.
So I think, well, I'll type up Plan A and Plan B and have Mary Jude review that and ask her about the, um, bulk wash. So Plan A will be, you know, and the Plan A and Plan B, we can work in parallel. So Plan A is, we continue with our current system and it gets resolved by December fifteenth. Plan B in parallel is we start to work on the permit for the permanganate and get it over to MSDEP. So if by December fifteenth we're like, "Hey, these tests are still not right," then we can pull the trigger on the permanganate and get that up and running between December fifteenth and like February one. And then we can tell the school, "Hey, everything is trending in the right direction." Does that seem reasonable to everyone? Anyone have suggestions?
Very much.
We wish you best luck in that.
Thank you.
We'll save you a glass of pink water.
Yeah.
Well, and, and, and looking at photos, it's fluorescent pink. It's not just...
I was wondering what that, like, pasta would look like.
We can, we can cut back.
You know, when they're cooking, because...
Valentine's pasta.
It's just basically zucchini, huh?
Yeah, like a nice rosé.
Yeah.
But it's, it's like hot pink.
I mean, I...
It's Barbie, it's Barbie pink. Oh, my goodness!
Oh, my goodness. It's Barbie pink.
Yeah.
But that's in Canada, maybe, you know? They have other things in the world.
Yeah, they have them, yeah, it's all different there. Metric system.
But it's, it's not that.
Metric system.
Well, we, we...
We have Plan A, Plan B, and I will ask about Plan C, which will be bulk water and be like, "Look, we're doing..."
And when we ask about Plan C, we, there are things, steps that have to be taken by the water operator on each delivery of the water to, to satisfy DEP. So it's not just empty the truck. It's measure and monitor and all that sort of stuff.
And we don't want the kids to glow in the dark with pink permanganate.
Mash some of their hair.
All right, so just, so before we close on this, this is, I'll be, no to bulk water. Why?
Yeah, why?
You know, is there, can we get a little bit more of, the group is asking for an explanation.
What's the reason for that?
I'll ask her, we will ask Dr. Gulick as well, but I'll ask her, "How often do you see pink water? Do you have any metrics around that to support it?" Uh, metrics, maybe not to support it, but to help us understand the situation. And then let her know that our plan is to operate with the current system through December fifteenth, but we'll have the permit and process ASAP for hopefully approval around December fifteenth. So if we need to, you know, change strategies, we can do that in a timely manner. Everybody good?
Yep.
A lot of fun.
It was, yes. Okay, this process is aging me. I need like a botox fund.
I had full head of hair.
And two boats. I have kind of one.
Okay. So we'll go back to Old Business A, update on ongoing facility and other resource initiatives. So Old Town Hall repair and reuse. Peter?
Yep, so, um, the game plan, because I heard Roland talking and so he hasn't been hearing some of the earlier you know, approaches that we've been taking. But the, the approach we're taking is we have, uh, plans for repair of the roof, engineered plans for repair of the roof. And we've applied for, through Community One Stop, a grant for which we'll learn about whether we're successful or not, um, probably by end of November, if not sooner. Uh, we apply for two hundred grand to repair the roof. So that, and we also have ARPA money set aside to the tuna two hundred and fifty grant. So we're, we're looking to repair the roof, replace the rafters, repair the roof. Structure's good, right in the Old Town Hall. And get the heating system going. Not really doing anything much extensive on air conditioning at this stage. And also looking to just clean the pa- place up, paint it. Concrete down in the basement instead of, there are wooden plywood floors over, you know, wet ground, basically. So concrete that down where that can be an additional space, since it already has a restroom facility. Uh, additional space for the police department, which Chief Coop thinks is a great idea. So that's, that's the strategy for this, uh, getting out of here and into that building. We have until May of two thousand twenty-six for this building. So we're, we're, which direction we go at in terms of, uh, is, again, the roof fix first, then get the inside done and get the, and get, and get the heat on. And depending on what happens with the Community One Stop, that's, uh, the, the, the game plan at this stage of the game, which seems most economical, even in spite of the need for, you know, um, prevailing wages and all of that sort of stuff, okay? So that's the game plan there and we have, you know, there's a rough draft of the bid documents, which is gonna try to be specific to the roof at this stage, because that also allows for some simplicity of the bidding documents and process. Okay, and so it's a bit of a step at a time. Uh, but at the, in the meantime, we do have somebody, Joe is bringing somebody in this week, who would give an estimate with prevailing wages on just the painting part. So we have a good sense of whether that's gonna be, how, what we're really talking about, just cleaning up and painting once the roof structure's repaired. So, um, we're still confident in that. Uh, that that's a good solution. Um, and we'll have plenty of space. So maybe BMR admin would like to lease some space there and this time we charge them, right? Just kidding.
Sixty thousand a year to cover the water?
Yeah, but there might be, there will be space there for everything we might need, I think, for the foreseeable future, if we can pull it off. And it's not, you know, it's not, we're not redoing the building. It's not, the game plan is not a two-million-dollar project. It's a half-million-dollar or less project.
Trustless.
To get reoccupancy, okay?
Yeah.
So that's where we're at with that on, um...
Police station and old playground repurposing?
Yeah, so the police station, again, there's just some minor outside repairs. The other part is in the basement of the Old Town Hall. As far as the playground, we also put in for, in that grant application process, you could do, you know, more than one. So the other one we did was for, uh, I'll call it a riverwalk type of approach. It's recreational use along the river, starting from where the current playground is, okay? So if we score on that, uh, there was a seventy-five-thousand-dollar grant application to help with the creation of a riverwalk. We have the property all the way from the street to Uxbridge, along the river, basically, because we own parcels now from tax takings and so forth. And we also have the parcel across the street. So, you know, bundling in something there to make use of the natural beauty along the river seems pretty favorable to, you know, Kevin Del Giszi, um, and others. Everyone I spoke to thinks it's a great thing to use that land that way, okay? Um, particularly this side of the central street.
You were waiting for some sort of direction or response from conservation, possibly?
No.
For the playground?
No, no. What we were looking to find out from, on the playground, if we would try to do it to a basketball court. And that's still possible, right? The riverwalk is the preferable approach.
Right.
And, and putting anything with the playground might impair access. So until we have a better sense of what we can or will likely do, we're, we're not going to the basketball court or rebuild the playground. Rebuilding the playground's pretty expensive. Basketball court's less so, but the concern was you put a, an impermeable membrane over what is suspected to be the leaching field of the town hall, police station, septic system. But we don't know for certain of that, okay?
I thought we were leaning towards garden. That's why I was...
I think, like Officer, Officer Lanigan mentioned, taking the community garden that's behind the police station that nobody knows about, because it's...
Behind the police station.
It'd be up there.
Right.
And that would complement a riverwalk.
I think it would.
Community garden.
Yeah.
A riverwalk, you know, people go out and enjoy the nature, the...
Yeah, so I think that's a, I...
That could be part of the conversation, too. I don't think, and, when, what's the timing of the grant?
So again, we might hear between now and the end of November is what we understand and learn about, okay?
So should we talk to the, I think it's, um, Kate Donovan? She runs the community garden, so we should ask her.
I mean, they do a beautiful job.
They do.
With the horrible space they have. The garden is awesome. So imagine if it actually, that full sun.
Right.
And more open space and, and like Officer Lanigan said, you know, it's easy to say, because, but it costs money, but maybe have a small gazebo in the middle, so people can sit, have a coffee, you know, go to George's, buy something to drink, come back down the hill, have a coffee or whatever, enjoy the garden and then go for a walk down the river. And, and at the same time, when police, new recruits are coming in for a job interview. Currently, right now, they see a weed garden.
It's terrible.
With some play, some, uh, uh, playset in the middle of it for kids. And it, it's like an abandoned town and then in the back of their mind, they must be saying, "Do I wanna work here?"
There's probably no money, right?
You know?
Okay.
If you see something that's pleasing to the eye, you know, and, and...
I'll connect with Kate.
Welcoming the community to, to...
The old broken window theory.
I'll make sure to hurry mail bags on a thread together, maybe with Kevin.
Sure, I've, yeah.
Would attract more.
Yeah.
And you have a tractor and I have a tractor. We can go there and tear things up.
The, the word gets out, people are gonna come off the greenway.
Just don't damage it.
Walk across the river, use ours, support George's, support, uh, Mill Tavern Pizza.
True.
You know, give them something to come off the greenway and walk down the street a little bit and see what's, what Millville has.
That's a great idea.
Have we looked into the possible security risks for a pathway? Because I know there's stuff on...
Haven't even thought about that.
Yeah, just as a...
Sensitive information regarding the police station?
Hmm? No, 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 just having the, the, the river pathway. Because we already have issues on the greenway with the bay path and all that. Just wondering if that has been considered or...
Oh, oh, as in like policing?
Yeah, yeah, that's...
Oh.
They need, they need things to do.
Yeah.
I mean... Not, not increases their budget.
This has been underage drinking half a year, is...
Yeah, I know, but we just...
We don't, we don't encourage it.
They've done it along the railroad tracks that the greenways are, forever. They used to just walk through the woods to get to it. Now they've got a nice paved way.
Or look at this way. There's still drinking there, but now we'll be able to get to them. We'll have a pathway to get to them.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just, so, putting it out there, because that's...
Well, that's a fair question. I hadn't even thought of it. That's a fair question. Updates others, uh...
Salt chat.
Salt chat, yeah, so, uh, we, you know, we get money, we have money from the state. So we're required to follow certain procurement requirements, which include, you know, percentage, the state tells us a percentage of a small business, or women-owned businesses or minority-owned businesses that you, you want your, you know, responders to the bidding process to, uh, comply with. Um, but just last week we got where we don't have to have any particular requirements. So, uh, we have a draft IFB or, uh, the invitation for bid. And, uh, that's with counsel for review and then we'll start the process. And, uh, so it'd be likely, you know, still, I need Brian just to weigh in a little bit further on that, but, um, we'll be good to go on that one. And, uh, we have twenty-five set aside from ARPA and seventy-five from the state to get that done.
Yay.
Sort of had blind.
Yep.
So that'd be great.
Slowly but surely.
Um, that, we'll have an ARPA update at your next meeting and Sarah will be here for that as well. We have police cameras that, that need to be, uh, replaced. We need to upgrade the police camera system that is outside the building as well as inside the building, in the garage and all of that. So Chief Coop, uh, put in an, an application that I signed today for a Maya grant for the ninety-eight-hundred dollars that the new system would cost. And it has unlimited, you know, retain, not unlimited, but he, Chief Coop thinks there's at least two years' worth of data capture that, that's retained. So there's a lot of space built in, because it's got servers and so forth. So, um, absent the ninety-eight-hundred from, um, Maya, which we'll know, I think, pretty quickly, and we think we have a good shot at it. Then it would be, I would argue, out of the seventy-five you've allocated for the police department repairs, use funds for this, because it's pretty necessary, is how I'll describe it. Okay? Just so you have that.
Okay, and then, um, BMR Open Meeting Law Complaint Response Discussion. So I just kept this on the agenda because we get another email. That says we have until October twenty-third, twenty-fifth, if we want to respond.
From a school's legal?
Huh?
Who's the email from?
It was from the Open Meeting Law people.
The Attorney General's Office.
Attorney General's Office.
Open Meeting Law.
Open Meeting Law people.
So that's in your packets, yeah.
Yeah, so if you wanna look at that, you can. Um, I think at the last meeting, I don't know, you weren't here, but, um, we decided not to escalate it further.
Right.
Unless you have a differing opinion.
No.
Yeah. All right, so Lifted Luxuries Host Community Agreement Expiration Update and Discussion. So this is the email that Peter gave you that he has some highlights. So, um... Oh, so, and this is from the attorney. So he mentioned that... So he's recommending that we extend the agreement one more time. Um, just to give her, make sure, you know, we've been as fair as possible. Um, well, I have opinions, but, does anyone else wanna go first? I feel like I do all the talking. Anyone else have opinions?
How many years have we given her?
We gave her two extra years.
Yep, expires on the fifth.
And, and our attorneys are saying that's not enough?
No, he just, he's, he's conservative. If you read the, the bottom paragraph, right, he's conservative in his thinking.
I conserve him.
To avoid any, you know, to re, to limit the litigation, the chances of litigation is, I guess, the way I would descri- interpret his words. The chances of litigation, not the success in any litigation. I think we have no problems, I think we'd have no problems there, but you still have to deal with litigation. This person might say, "Jeez, you, you might business fail because you didn't give me enough time."
And they'd want to settle.
And, and the question is, how much, you know, what do you lose by additional time on this? There's nobody chomping at the bit to come in here. Anybody that comes in here isn't gonna likely be, you know, if you read some of the stuff that I highlighted up above in that, you know, the Cannabis Control Commission has really put up, you know, messed up the whole business model for everybody, at least for the municipalities involved. So the attractiveness of any of these businesses, you know, are... So the attractiveness of any of these businesses, you know, other than the retail where you get the sales tax, the rest of it's a pain in the neck and of no, maybe some value of real estate value taxes, but not much. So this one, we have a deal. There's been some payments made that are not insubstantial. Where there are litigation, one would make arguments that the town was part of the reason why the business didn't get off the ground, right? And we can't talk about this in, you know, executive session, unfortunately. So here we are.
So when was the last communication we had?
So, so I reached out to find out what was going on. And the last communication was that she was trying, her financing had fallen through. She's got a million bucks invested in this. You know, she threw in that, you know, the stop work order by the former building commissioner back in the day, you know, stopped the process, but that's not factually correct. The process was stopped due to lack of funding paying the contractor. The contractor stopped the process. So, and, and, but, and there was an investor that, one of the reasons why you all extended was there was an investor with a term sheet that I looked at that was quite wow type of term sheet, okay? But apparently that didn't, that fell through. And so still looking for an investor and looking to still buy the facility was part of the investor equation, was buying the facility and not being a tenant. We have, you know, hearsay, is how I would describe it, that one's not a tenant there today. But if, if you don't extend, now, the other problems are caused by, to rather, the landlord, who has a building that's been substantially fit up for specific purpose operation that can no longer take place unless somebody comes in that you're amenable to doing a deal with. But again, the primary fit up was for grow, and the grow part is the least attractive of it all, right? So would you likely enter a deal with somebody? I would strongly urge you not to, based on the math and the dynamics, the community impacts. So this allows something to happen that doesn't screw a landlord as well, even though everybody is responsible for their own business. We're not, the town can't solve a business management issue. How's that? I think that's the way I would put it.
Yep.
So what do you lose by saying, like to see six months and some meaningful progress, however you define it? Your last extension was by October fifth, you're up and running for all three elements of the host community agreement, which was grow, cultivation, cultivation, manufacturing, retail. You're, the decision made to extend said, you've got to have all three of those operating, which means Cannabis Control Commission approve that license by October fifth, twenty-twenty-three. And that didn't happen for sure.
And no sizable progress has been made?
Correct. No progress has been made on the facility since it was stopped work ordered with reasonable things to comply with what had already been advised by the then building commissioner. And I was at those meetings, so I can attest to, the town had, was not unreasonable in any actions it took.
The only thing I'm concerned is, is no matter what time period we set as a extended deadline, we're probably going to get the same thing from our lawyer, because he says some time, some more time. There's no definitive.
Correct.
Timeline.
That's fair.
So we'll probably just keep getting this and then just keep pushing it out indefinitely for the next twenty years.
So here's the way I would say it, that there's either, one way you could do another, like say, let's just say for discussion purposes, six months extension, right? Within which time, there has to be commencement of further fit up, right? Moving towards the opening of that business, which means that one has to be a tenant, a viable tenant in that building or owner of that building. Absent meaningful progress being made on the completion of the fit up, there's no business. I mean, that's one way to do it, and it's not unreasonable. And the onus is back on the party.
Yes. So I don't entirely disagree with you, Andrew. I think that, you know, we've been very generous. And the other thing is, like, she's not even here tonight. Like, if this was my business, and like what I sunk my heart and soul into and all my money, I would be here talking to all of you.
Right. I'd be here if I had a hundred dollars invested.
So you know what I mean? Like, that's, that's my big concern, is like, she knew this was on the agenda. Peter's been trying to get in touch with her since June. She's, it was like radio silence. She popped up in like August, and then last week to be, oh, did the board decide anything? I was like, well, we took no action. And then you're on the agenda again.
Come to the meeting, yeah.
You know what I mean? Like, I mean, no one told her, hey, you should come to the meeting, but, you know, if you're investing, you know, millions of, hundreds of thousands of dollars, I'll say that, I would be at this meeting.
So it sounded like she was put on notice, like she knew she was on the agenda.
Yes, oh, yes.
Oh, yeah.
Wow.
So I think I might give her, like, I'd be okay with six more months, but then like, dude, that is it, just to kind of take our counsel advice, because I think our, what we want to do is protect the town from a lawsuit. I think six more months would do that. And that's more than generous. I would give her two and a half years on an original one-year agreement.
Yeah.
That's a lot of an increase. So that's kind of where I'm leaning, but I could also lean to take no action, and you have until Thursday or Friday, whenever the fifth is, because we've given you years, years, and you couldn't even come to the meeting. So I'm.
My only thing is, is what do six months really give us as a legal thing? I mean, does it really improve our standing that much?
A sign of good faith, I think.
We were to give them an extra, how much extra time?
Yeah. I guess that's the only thing that concerns us, like, the conservative legal advice.
Yeah.
So in terms of, would we be putting the town at risk by just tonight? I don't know. You don't think so? Okay. Member of the audience thinks we'll be okay? So what do you?
We have record of all the time we've contacted her, and we've been ghosted, right?
Yeah. Peter has, yeah, Peter's been emailing with her.
We've reached out to her a couple of times since the summer, just to what's going on there.
And it's on emails, so there's record.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I'll stick to my.
You know, and then she, she becomes a ghost for a month or two.
Yeah.
And then, and then doesn't show up tonight.
The old ghost.
She wasn't specifically, specifically invited, but she knew it was on the agenda and could be.
Stalking this meeting.
Yeah.
I would, like, I don't know, is that, am I wrong to think if you had invested like hundreds of thousands of your dollars of your own money, you would be at the meeting?
Limiting any liability exposure. That's all it is, what you do.
So counsel is concerned that she might seek a million dollars for all of the financial resources she's put into this project. So she thinks, so counsel thinks that there's a possibility that, you know, she could go after not just us, but the other parties that she's dedicated resources towards. So my concern is whether or not they're not, it's her, in the eventuality, it's like, if we, you know, said, you don't, we're not going to extend this, and she comes after the town for some kind of liability, is she going to hold, try to get more from the town than she's already dedicated to the town? I guess so, as opposed to more than the sixty thousand dollars. So I guess that's my concern.
Some sort of like damages?
Yeah, because I'm thinking, like, if she goes, let's say she.
Community damages or whatever.
Well, I think just to hold all the parties, whatever, let's say there's three additional parties, and if they, you know, go at us jointly, severally liable, I think there's a possibility that the town could be exposed to more litigation than had if we just wait a few more months, I think. Because you never, like, just that good faith sign, that we just give them a little bit more time, just a little.
Here's the thing, if we do that for her, like, we don't have anyone asking us for this license either.
Yeah.
So if we were to do that, we're not going to miss out on anything, and it covers the town.
Six more months?
I'm okay with six more months, but then tell her that's really it, and if I were her, I'd be at these meetings.
And, and again, I would say if you did this six months, that you put some, some, some something to it.
What's wrong with ninety days?
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, Jerry, please.
Pete, you talk about fit up costs. I don't, when I'm buying, I saw that there's still tie rods that haven't been, cement hasn't put in, they saw wires all hanging out, parking lot hasn't been done. So, and I don't, I've never been in the side of the building, except the time you and I went in there originally, Pete. But when I look up the fit up costs of this thing, not only the cost of what that might be, but also what's the timing on it? It's hard enough to get pots today for anything, right? So I don't know if this thing is ninety-nine percent ready to go, and you just need to put a light bulb in, bang, you're ready to go, and we could have them six months? Or is it like, six months is outrageous, because they can't even get the pots they need, or the people, or the time, or the construction people, or whatever, to get in there in six months? So six months, to me, doesn't make a lot of sense, because I think the timing of that, and you're in construction, I'm not, but six months, everybody tells you that, oh, next month, next month, next month. It's like a famous statement now, right?
Six months goes by like a week sometimes.
Bingo, right? So I don't know whether six months is going to do anything for you, okay? The other thing is that she's a great salesperson. I saw her come in here, and I saw her sell the whole thing right through this whole place. And as much as you did your due diligence in looking at the investor, the thing you couldn't tell was whether the investor really had the interest from her or her to the investor. All you did was look at a blank sheet that said X's and O's and dollars and cents and say, hey, this makes sense, this guy can afford to do this. And I understand that, that's, that's, that's best you could do. I just don't know, we've lost out on what, two years?
Yep.
I mean, the last time I checked, there's like eleven pot shops within about six-mile radius of this.
Yeah.
So whatever it was that we could have got as being one of the first ones up and in and got, you know, some following, we're not going to have that. I don't, I think there's way too many candy shops on the corners now.
Yep.
And I don't think you're going to be, and any of those retail projections you had before, Peter, I was in retail for thirty-two years, I can guarantee you, throw them out the window. They don't make it. I think there's too much competition. I, I think you guys have lost out on that opportunity with that building to have.
It's gorgeous on the creek, I would.
It's ridiculous. I mean, everywhere you drive by, that's all you see, these joints going up. So between the fit up costs, the construction time that it's going to take to put it in, and also, I heard you talk about lawyers, and I thought you were going to be one, I guess, at some point in time.
Maybe.
Where I came from, I'm not worried about that, that's why we have lawyers. You know, I don't, you know, you should not be worried about whether, if you've done everything correctly. And according to what you're telling me, you have done things correctly.
Yes.
You're given a two-year extension.
Yep.
You've lost out on that opportunity for any type of monies coming back from any retail sales, which you never got, which was supposed to be part of the plan, so we're all talking about revenue, here it comes. We've lost out as a town. What, what does it cost us? It's cost us over two years. And we got a building now, that, what are we going to do with it? I mean, it's not our problem, it's the landlord's problem, but it kind of is our problem, because, you know, at some point in time, you don't want the thing, see the thing burned down again. I mean, it's got it fixed up. So I, I think there's an opportunity here. You have a lawyer for a reason. He gives you advice, you either take it, as you folks have done, or you don't take it. But I personally think that you get a lawyer, if you've got everything dotted, eyed and crossed T, I don't have an issue going forward with this. And I know, I think this gal will talk you, spin you back into a circle for another six months, and you'll be sitting there again going, well, didn't happen again, now what do we do? So my opinion is that you move forward on the thing, try to do something with the building. Other than that, you've got other things you can do with the building besides what it is.
Sure.
The other thing is, is that the lawyer didn't even say that six months would be the right time.
No, no.
Yeah, no.
We don't have a timeline.
Well, and the other thing that Peter and I talked about is, is this person keep, have the funds to bring the lawsuit? Like, even if they, so even, like, one, to Jerry's point, our eyes are dotted and Ts are crossed. We have done everything right by this person.
Yep.
We gave them two years extra, which is a lot of time.
Yep.
So.
And what they paid you originally, as Pete said, it's real money that they gave us, that was, that was the ante in the game.
Yeah.
You want to play the card game, you got to ante up.
Yep.
I don't say, wow, what a great person, she ended up. No, she's just in the card game. What aggravates me is two years forward, we were looking for revenue, we got nothing.
Yep.
We're sitting there with our pockets turned inside out, trying to figure out how we're going to do all the things we want to do, and she wants, she wants another, whatever timeframe, six months or stay into a point, it might even be longer, who knows?
Well, she's not even here to tell us how much more time she needs. So we can move on to the next item on the agenda, unless someone wants to make a motion. I'm not inclined to make one. Anyone else? Peter, departments?
I think we should put that on next week, next meeting's agenda, though.
It'll be expired, but we can put it on there. Her, it expires on the fifth, which is the second, so Thursday, Friday.
So you're taking no action tonight, as you took no action last week? Simple as that.
Yep.
Thursday, on Thursday.
Okay, nothing on departments?
Public forum? There's public forum here, that never happens. Anyone?
They are, they already spoke.
I know, that's true. No one wants to talk about pink water anymore?
No.
No.
I will say, I went.
Unicorn pasta?
I went to a, I went to a horse auction in Ohio, in Amish country. In one of the restaurants, the sign says, our yell, our water has a yellow tint, but it's safe. We didn't drink it, just so you know.
No, it's true, like.
You know, so you've got to think, the little kids are going to, and the bigger kids are going to think, eh.
No, I know.
That don't look like the water I drink at home.
I always think about, remember, I don't know if anyone's watched The Goonies? Do you remember The Goonies? And they go down to where the fatale is in their hideout, and like, it's a restaurant, like, well, four waters. And those waters, they look at it, and it looks brown, like, like it has manganese in, and they're like, she was sweating, drink it! It's like, that's what I was thinking of, like, it doesn't matter, if it's not clear, no one wants to drink it.
Exactly.
So I'm glad I can work in my Goonies reference. Very excited. Announcements?
I have a couple, okay? You may recall that North Smithfield is putting, extending their water main along Providence Street for a few homes there. It's being paid for by the company who's assumed the responsibility for tainted water wells, okay? So work will begin on that sometime late next week is what it's going to start commencing. And there's a mailer going to go out to the residents on the street from the company that's going to be doing the work. During construction, they'll put a detour in place, a minor one through Alfonso Way, and they'll, certainly all the resident, local residents can get to and from their homes. But just letting folks know, there'll be a mailer going out on that, and some work will commence on the street to extend the North Smithfield line to serve its really five residences along there. Second announcement, you should look on the town website as well as the local Facebook. There's the Millville Senior Center activities, and one of the key activities happening is flu clinic on October tenth from nine-thirty to eleven a.m. And there's a link to register, and there's one of these codes, you can register to get a flu shot. And it's for residents six months, any resident six months and older who want to participate and get a flu clinic, and it's managed by the Board of Health and their nursing folks that they use. Okay?
Uh, correspondence?
The only correspondence, I just refer you back to what I handed out at the last meeting, which was there was some correspondence from, uh, folks in Hope Dale who wanna have, they call it a summit. I'm not sure exactly what they're, they're talking about budgetary and other matters regarding BVT and our BVT representative is here this evening. Uh, and invited to that would be, uh, you all, should you want to go to it, but it's not clear exactly what they're going to be doing or what the problem is they're trying to fix. Uh, it's on Thursday, October twenty-sixth in Hope Dale at a, a Hope Dale Community House, starting at seven PM.
Jerry, do you know anything about like what the agenda is or framework or...
On that letter, Peter, they, they talked about it is...
Well, again, I, I couldn't interpret it. They, they say, and then...
I couldn't either.
That's why I said I don't really know what it's about.
I couldn't either. I, I...
And were you invited? Was BVT invited?
No, nobody from BVT, including Dr. Fitzpatrick, was not invited, which he was not real happy about.
Okay.
Yeah, that's...
It, it's, uh...
You might not get a lot, but you invite people in meetings.
Well...
Even when you're not getting a lot.
Probably not the best idea if you're gonna have a dialogue about something.
Yeah.
Probably have people that know the most about it, spent thirty-one years knowing on it, so... But I don't know, Pete. I, I, I read that backwards and forwards five times. Uh, thank you for sending it to me as well and, uh...
So, budgetary matters, I guess, is...
Yeah, yeah, they have...
I wanna know what, what...
What's the problem they're trying to solve?
What BBT, BBT can do to solve for problems of thirteen towns. I'm not sure that they can.
Yeah, okay.
That's all, but that's, if you wish to go, have at it. You might, you might wanna bring, some of the drinks.
Light refreshments will be served. I did get that part of it.
Yes, I, I saw you, sorry.
Okay.
Bring my own water.
Clear.
Okay, minutes, so, these are from May first. I did not see any shoes.
Um, I saw, well, not issues per se, but just on the, in new business under council on aging. Uh, it just refers to a member of the council on aging, but it doesn't name that member. Figure it probably should, so otherwise it's unclear as to what, who it was, what was happening. It's in the first paragraph and then in the last paragraph of that, of section I. Or, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm gonna have to go back and look and see who made comments.
Yeah.
So, I don't know how critical that is.
So, it was either people there, it was Pat Finn or, um, Sandra Castle was there too.
There was a third one too, I think.
And, yeah, the, um, gentleman, um, his name, I...
Larry Pearson.